Good morning. Welcome to the Bucks County Board of Commissioners meeting for August 3, 2022. We're going to begin with the salute to the flag, please.
I would be most pleased to flag like the United States of America, the true republic of which saints, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. All right, we have a few presentations to do this morning to start us off. First, we're going to give a little bit of an update on the Bucks County farm preservation that's been happening over a couple decades now. I'm going to turn this over to Director of Communications, Mr. Eric Nagy.
Good morning. My pleasure to be here this morning to introduce this project. This is something that we are hopeful will be an ongoing, dynamic project highlighting some of the farmland preservation we've done here in Bucks County. When we started this, we realized we needed somebody to take the helm, and we were very fortunate that that decision coincided with the hiring of our summer intern, Josh Brown. Josh has worked diligently on this project for his entire time with us, involving interviews and research and putting together what you're going to see today, updating folks at Bucks County on some of the land that we have preserved and who's on that land, who's working that land, what are they growing, what are they raising? And we think that this is a project that can continue beyond just this three that we are highlighting. We are hoping to turn this into a multimedia website that will live on buckscounty.gov and we'll be able to update it periodically. We'll also have a podcast piece to this, as well as several videos and other multimedia presentations to show as we go through this project and hopefully it lives on. But this is really Josh's baby. Josh comes to us from Buckingham. He is a graduate of CB East, and he is about to be a junior at THE Ohio State University. I'm pretty sure that's how you legally have to say that. So I'm not going to take up any more time. I just want to say that this is Josh's last day with us as he's going to prepare to go back to school. We've really enjoyed having him here. He's been a tremendous asset for the communications department. We'll miss having him, but this is a good way to go out, sort of highlight his body of work, and really something for our county to build on in the years to come. So without further ado, Josh?
Good morning, Commissioners. Farming has been a key component of Pennsylvania's history since William Penn founded it in 1682. In 1950, Bucks County had over 260,000 acres of agricultural production, which is equal to 67% of the total county land base. Today, that number is just above 77,000 acres. In 1989, the Bucks County Agricultural Preservation Program was created with the goal of preserving 18,000 acres by the year 2019. That goal has been accomplished with Bedminster Township with the most acres. The goal of this program is to promote long-term commitment to agriculture by offering financial incentives and security of land use. So far, there have been 238 farms that have been preserved. $177,816,465 have been invested in this program since 1989, and 18,431.6 acres have been preserved. So why should people care about farm preservation? Agriculture is the number-one industry in Pennsylvania, followed by tourism. Driven by tourism, hospitality brings in $1 billion annually into the Bucks County economy, according to Visit Bucks. It is important to understand how farm preservation can benefit the community. It can improve air quality, create a healthier climate for future generations, filter fresh water, support local business, create jobs, and it protects the natural beauty of Bucks County. I have had the unique opportunity to travel to farms and interview farmers who operate on preserved land. We discussed how the program impacted them, along with showcasing each individual farm. Crooked Acres Dairy Farm in New Hope was the first farm that was preserved through the agricultural preservation program. I had the chance to speak with David Crook, current owner and son of the original easement grantors. A Bucks County dairy farmer since the early 1960s, David told me about the evolution he has seen within the industry. There has been a massive increase in the commodity markets, which have made it difficult for many farms to continue operations. In 1966, Bucks County had 117 dairy farms in operation. Today, there are 10. Because Crooked Acres was preserved, they had the means to renovate and upgrade their equipment to continue operations. Crook runs the day-to-day affairs of his 119-acre farm, which he calls a year-round enterprise, and these tasks are not small. He showed me some of the common day-to-day practices he does multiple times a day, every day, to take care of his 58 milking cows. David told me at the end of the day, "You need to love what you're doing; otherwise, you might as well not even bother." The Agricultural Preservation Program has allowed for him and his family to continue to do what they love, which will be carried on for generations. In terms of proximity, the Crook family is very close. His mother, who just turned 96, and she lives on the property, and when I was there, her great-grandchildren were all running around without a care in the world. Tom Murtha rents 40 acres of preserved farmland with his wife and co-owner Tricia of Blooming Glen Farm. The primary focus of their operations is on their CSA program, which means community-supported agriculture. CSA is a mutual agreement between the farm and the members, where the members prepay for shares of each weekly harvest from May through November. They have been running their CSA program for about 17 years now. They began with 100 members, and now they're up to 350 members with a high and strong retention rate. The land there was almost preserved before they opened up Blooming Glen Farm. They made an agreement with Henry and Charlotte Rosenberg, the original easement grantors. Tom and Tricia can do what they love without having to worry about outside organizations trying to develop their land because it's here in perpetuity. In turn, they're selling the narrative of their land just as much as they're selling their crops. They grow certified organic with the intentions of promoting the community's well-being. At Blooming Glen, they are working as the front lines of humility, as Tom calls it. He takes what Mother Nature allows, and he never knows exactly what he's going to get. The farmers I spoke to mentioned that they're nervous about what the next generation of farming is going to look like. At Snipes Farm and Education Center, they're taking an active approach into teaching the next generation of farmers. They operate on a total of 150 acres, and they aim their programming towards youth. While they have many different programs, I've found it to be very interesting how they want to inspire and educate young minds. They've been running a summer camp now for around 15 years, and they started with 10 campers per week, and now they have 85 campers per week. They prioritize teaching about farming practices and soil and water conservation. Along with programs, they are always working on new projects to continue to improve their land. Executive Director John Snipes told me that knowing this land will be here forever is more of a reason to improve infrastructure. Future generations cannot undo these changes. John believes that if the community can come and truly experience their land, they will feel a sense of ownership and want to see the future of Snipes Farm be successful. At Snipes, they are constantly thinking of ways to improve the well-being of the community. From giving free, weekly shares of crops to senior centers around the county, to welcoming school tours throughout the entire school year, they truly have a passion for both sharing their land and their resources. So what comes next? As Eric mentioned, we've been creating a detailed webpage on these farms that will live on the county website. We have also recently recorded a podcast episode of Bucks County Conversations, which will be released shortly. And we will also continue to use multimedia to continue to promote the Agricultural Preservation Program. Thank you so much for your time this morning, and thank you so much for this experience I've had this summer. I truly appreciate it.
Just that, Mr. Chairman, and this pro-Josh, you did a great job, terrific job, and thank you for the work that you've been putting into this program and helping the county out. Congratulations and all the best in going back to school. You know, agriculture, as Josh outlined, I mean, you know, it used to be so many acres, I don't know what he said, 250,000 acres, and now it's down to 77,000 acres, but it's still a very important industry here in Bucks County, and very important to the county and its citizens, and we have to make sure that these farms that are left are preserved and passed down to the families because it's just so important for a variety of reasons. So I can remember down in the lower part of the county when it was all farmland back in the 50s and 60s, and, you know, most of the farms down in the lower part of the county are now gone. There's still a few smaller ones that are left, but in the middle of the county, in the upper part of the county, it's a big part of life here in Bucks County. We've got to make sure we do everything we can to help the farmers out and to preserve the land. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you, Josh. Echo the comments of Mr. DeGiramo. You obviously did a great job, and, you know, best of luck going back. I'm sure the Penn State fans wish you luck for most of the year, except for, you know, the game against the Lions, but otherwise, you know, enjoy and, you know, feel free to reach out, you know, if you need any help with any assignments or something. I think Jim O'Malley can help you, you know, put something together. All right. So we're going to move on to another presentation here. We have a proclamation for the Foundation's Community Partnership, which Commissioner Morrisagley will read.
Thank you. I'm delighted to be able to read this. I have worked with them and have enjoyed every moment of it, including one of their interns this summer. Whereas Foundation's Community Partnership, FCP, is a philanthropic organization committed to supporting the behavioral and human service needs of children and young adults, as well as their families in Bucks County. And whereas FCP provides grants and technical assistance to nonprofit organizations, awards scholarships to Bucks County high school seniors, subsidizes service learning internships for college students, underwrites community education programs, and supports behavioral education and research. And whereas during COVID-19 pandemic, FCP gave more than $430,000 to nonprofits. And since 2007, FCP has awarded more than 700 grants worth more than $6 million. Whereas FCP should be commended for their many years of service to grantees, stakeholders, employees, consultants, and friends. So now, therefore, do we, the Bucks County Board of Commissioners, hereby recognize and congratulate Foundation's Community Partnerships as the group celebrates its 15th anniversary. And in so doing, we applaud FCP.
...a special question, and then another member of our board, Rachel Neff, who we certainly appreciate the connection to the county that it provides. So I'll try to keep my talking points to a minimum because I know you have a hectic agenda, but we're going to start with a quick video to kind of show you some of the things that we do. So what you can see here, not only have we been doing this for 15 years, but our history really traces back much longer than that, and our focus remains steadfast on Bucks County. And we really feel privileged that over the past 15 years that we've been able to work with so many nonprofits who serve Bucks County and make this a better place to live and work for so many. Next slide, please. Just to kind of give you a sense here, over the past 15 years, we've awarded over 700 grants to nonprofits, and as you mentioned, as a small organizations, we also were able to pivot very quickly when the pandemic hit and been able to really give nonprofits what they needed. And at that point, it was a lot of cash assistance in order to provide technology enhancement for their staff, be able to pivot to a hybrid or at-home environment, and that's really what we've been focusing on to support nonprofits throughout this pandemic. And now, as they transition back, we're certainly happy to see that so many of them have picked up again with their programs and services, you know, serving those that needed the most during this time. And you can see here from our 2021 annual report, so we've awarded over $6.5 million over the course of the year, and certainly we hope many more of those dollars will continue to benefit those in Bucks County who needed the most. And certainly what we've seen during the pandemic, and probably no news to you, a lot of nonprofits have reached out, and we welcome that, needing support, needing that little bit of extra help in order to provide those programs and services to those that need it. Next slide. And then we mentioned our Summer Youth Core Program and also our High School Scholarship Program. Since our inception, we've kind of made it a commitment to fund that next generation of civic-minded individuals, so we provide 19 scholarships annually to Bucks County high schools to encourage them to obviously continue to do what they do, and those are high school students that are actively engaged in their communities, not only academically stellar, but also stellar examples of involvement in the high school environment as well as in the community. And then our Summer Youth Core Program, which provides interns to nonprofits serving Bucks County, so far has amassed over 55,000 service hours. So these are college students who are actively involved in these nonprofits, you know, helping provide those services, working with summer camps, working with disabled individuals who may need additional assistance, and, you know, certainly one of our key programs that we have provided every summer so far, and 191 interns have gone through this program since 2008. I think we have one more slide. And then the final piece of the puzzle, and you probably recognize some of those individuals in those pictures, but annually, we gather the nonprofit community at an annual luncheon. Where not only we encourage connections among nonprofits, because we certainly didn't want to see duplication of services, more collaborative approaches among the nonprofit sector, so that is one of our key programs. And then the other is education of those professionals in our community that's needed for accreditation purposes, so we offer workshops throughout the year that bring, you know, highly credentialed individuals to Bucks County, obviously over the past two years, more virtual rather than in person, but giving our local professionals the opportunity to learn from those, you know, who are highly credentialed and have a lot of experience in specific aspects. So another one of those efforts that we are really proud of in terms of providing those services right here in Bucks County. And that concludes our presentation day. I just wanted to thank the Commissioners, obviously, for their support and the kind proclamation. Also, you know, the Board of Directors, obviously, an integral part of this whole operation. Sometimes you think, you know, giving money away, you know, that's not a big deal, but it's actually more complicated than one expects because you want to make sure that those dollars obviously help those that need it the most, and that's what we continue to work on with those nonprofits, but they have done a wonderful job, not just over the past two years, but especially during the pandemic, to kind of keep things going, and certainly appreciate all of the encouragement of those nonprofits and extra funding that they needed to obviously keep the doors open. And like in any good anniversary, you know, we came up with some FCP swag, so I just wanted to present you with some FCP swag, so hopefully next time I see you on TV, you have the FCP ties on.
Sure, thank you. We have the proclamation. I'm going to thank FCP for all the work they do for being here with us today. It's our pleasure to recognize them and honor them and everything they do. We're going to move on to, with our agenda, public comment. This public comment period is on agenda items, and so we ask that people who have signed up keep their comments focused on one item that, or one or more items which are on our agenda. First name on the list is Mr. Mackhouse.
It's five minutes. It's supposed to be five minutes for the agenda.
Yeah, it should be, hold on, a little bit of mistake in the back. There we go.
Okay. Ed Mackhouse from Buckingham. I'm an retired teacher, physicist. I'd like to speak on Agenda Item Number 18, approved $61 million from the American Rescue Plan 2021. I'd like to discuss, with you have money, you have the responsibility to distribute it, and so that's a lot of money, a lot of responsibility. I'd like to say that the rescue plan, a lot of this rescue comes from misunderstanding of the vaccine and the virus. The chemists, they want to have better living through chemistry, they want to cure everything and make vaccines. A vaccine like polio cures polio.
Mr. Mackhouse, I don't really see the connection. If you want to talk about the Arbo funding.
I'm talking about how these funds will be spent. You take the responsibility, you accepted $61 million.
Okay.
There was a, you make, part of your program is mandating vaccines. I understand on some of the hiring, you mandate a vaccine. And a hospital like Doylestown Hospital, it's in Bucks County, they mandated vaccine, like for a doctor, they fired their best heart doctor there. There was a lawsuit, $10 million lawsuit, sued for COVID-19 vaccine mandate, they wanted $10 million settlement. This was in Everett, North State Health Systems, Evanston Hospital, Evanston, Illinois, right outside of Chicago. So the people who were illegally fired because they didn't accept their reasons for not wanting the vaccine, they're tied up to $10 million now. Maybe you should set aside $10 million from this. There was $10 million, the workers who were fired because they didn't accept the religious exemptions and medical exemptions, so they're entitled to $10 million, and the lawyers get $2 million. So you might consider setting aside from the $60 million of this rescue plan to reimburse people, medical professionals, who were not getting sick, they were fine, the virus didn't affect them because they took proper care of their health, and then they were fired because the best medical professionals knew how to take care of themselves and knew how to take care of the patient and didn't get sick. But they were punished for that, looking after professional doctors, what is the problem with the virus? Professional doctors know they can get sued if they do malpractice, so they assume that the patient should know the risks of taking the medical procedures, and the patient must accept that risk. They don't mandate that a patient takes a medical procedure or heart thing. So mandating the vaccine is taking the responsibility from the patients for any consequences from the vaccines. And you, that's accepting unlimited liability, which could be much more than $60 million. So we have to be very careful, you should understand, that most of the damage, like $1.9 trillion thing, damage, came from shutting the schools down, getting 40 million people fired because of mandatory shutdowns and vaccines. So this $1.9 trillion, that's unlimited damage, 40 million people fired, so you have to make the judgment, if you had to distribute that $60 million, and should you protect your liability from lawsuits from any of the actions you take, should maybe given priority. And so like 40% of the minority businesses were shut down, and you can rescue some businesses, but some businesses are completely destroyed from this. So you have the responsibility. I don't have that responsibility. You're elected, and do your best to distribute that money and look into possibility of future lawsuits. And you have different things that I'll be talking later on there. So thanks for all you're doing, and I appreciate you had the five million, five-minute videos and so that we could react to the people, because the media doesn't know, they just talk to themselves sometimes, and they don't know the reaction of the people, and this gives you a chance to get a reaction from the people. So thank you for your service, and I wish you well in dealing with these things. Thank you.
Thank you.
A point of information.
Yeah.
There's an agenda on the personnel that I think needs a date adjustment. We've, this is Matt Weintraub, the district attorney, we've actually filed a different one. I didn't know if this is appropriate time to address that, but I wanted to bring it to your attention before you approved it.
Are you, okay, we can look at that later on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lori Katz.
Good morning.
Morning.
I wanted to speak on Agenda Item Number Two, Board of Elections. It says, "Purpose to Approve Contract Decrease to Purchase Electronic Poll Books." I was wondering if you could give me more information and explain with some detail what the electronic poll books are? And then that brings me to also Agenda Item Number 18. The American Rescue Plan Act in the amount of $61,017,41. I'm wondering how you're planning to use these funds? And I'd like to address that, too, if I may. Last week, I sat through this more than two-hour meeting to give a two-minute comment that was not even addressed regarding the purchase of a $400,000 vehicle to solve an unemployment problem that appears non-existent because there's a program in place that has been serving the people of Bucks County well for the past 30 years with Career Link. I even proposed using that money to solve the problem of staffing the Office of Open Records that is woefully understaffed to meet the uptick in FOIA requests that was brought to our attention, and I'm wondering if that solution was considered. DoylestownDemocrats.com put out a plea on their website for the party supporters to come to the last Commissioner's meeting to speak out against people asking for FOIA requests to be filled. I was here. How many of these constituents showed up? None. Why? Because all your constituents want transparency. Because all your constituents want transparency. Everybody does. This is not a partisan issue. The public wants to know that those that govern have our best interests at heart and at hand, both in front of us and behind closed doors. If you are not transparent, it leads people to believe that you're high society. Hire more people to fulfill outstanding right to know requests. These governing positions should be humbling. Decisions made affect more than half a million people who live and work in Bucks County. You also appoint many people to positions where decisions made affect everyone. We want transparency on all levels, which brings me to the Aqua deal on the table to sell our publicly owned sewer to privately owned for-profit Aqua. Is this in the people's best interest to sell a publicly owned asset? Bucks County Water and Sewer Authority's website states, quote, "Water is a limited resource and one of our most valuable commodities," end quote. That makes me wonder, why would we sell one of our most valuable commodities to a private company? I've taken my time to door knock in several districts to see if this is something that interests the constituents of Bucks County. I have to say there is a resounding no to this deal. I have spent more than 10 hours and did not meet one person who felt that this was a good option. More people than not complained that the water bill has more than doubled since moving from a quarterly payment to monthly, which was a change that was imposed on us. What we've learned is that change always results in higher prices. Let's not make B C D C. Those representatives are out of touch with our constituents. Leadership can also start from the bottom up. Governing seems to be imposing from the top down, but it doesn't have to be. If we listen and involve our community through town hall meetings, please, town hall meetings, we need to have dialogue back and forth with you guys and we have ideas. Discussions can occur. We can bring solutions to the table that, that solves problems for everybody. You're in the position to lead at this moment. All of you are in the position to lead, elected officials to lead. Please be humble, listen to the people that elected you and lead from a pure and righteous place. Thank you.
Just a reminder to please stick to agenda items. Aqua is not something on our agenda at this point. Larson.
Unfortunately, I am a, one of the customers that Aqua would take over. And I do when I talk about it.
Mr. Larson, this, this time comment period is for agenda items only. So Aqua's not on. There is a later one. There's another agenda item which I, or period which I see you signed up for, so you can speak at that time. That's later on, yes, I'll, I'll bring, yeah, I'll bring you back. Christine Heitman.
Wait a minute.
So we're not, yeah.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. It'll start when you start.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you for letting me speak. My name is Christine Heitman. I live in Ben Salem and I'm speaking today about item VB2, the Board of Elections. I ran for local office in the primary and I filed a right to know request for some elections information. And in the appeals process, I found out that Bucks County is violating federal and state law with every election. So that's why I'm here today. I've delivered each of you a packet of information with some documentation that I'd like you to look at. Right here, this is a USB drive. When I go to, oh, during, during the election, I file, fill out my ballot. When I scan my ballot into the scanner, on the scanner, there's two USB drives. When I scan my ballot in, the scanner takes an image of the ballot and then copies it to both drives. Both of these, both of the drives that are on the scanner should be exactly the same at the end of the night. And then at my precinct, the judge of elections takes this USB drive and sends it to the county. The county then takes the USB drive and imports the data that's on the USB drive into the county's server. On this server, it is really big and it has a database on it with all the election information. Gene, do you know the federal law states that we need to maintain all election records for 22 months? Diane, that's 22 months and it means all election records, not just the ones that we care about. Robert, on June 14th of this year, I spoke to the Board of Elections and the woman told me that they were about to delete all of the records on all of the USB drives within the county for the primary. That would mean less than two months we're keeping these records. It's a violation of federal law. We're supposed to keep them for 22 months. If you look in the packet that I sent, that I have for you, the third document, if you opened it to page three, I've highlighted bullet point 14. This document is an affidavit written by Tom Freitag, the director of the Board of Elections. He writes, quote, "The USB drives are wiped of all data before each upcoming election and are subsequently reused and reformatted," end quote. So that is a quote from the Board of Elections, that we are, with every election, not following the law. I'm here today for two reasons. Number one, I'm really hoping that you will do something about this and make sure that we're following the law. I want clean elections and I'm hoping that you want them too. Number two, I am the fourth branch of government, we the people, and I'm here to ensure that you do your job. If you, so I am videotaped right now and my friend's recording the live stream. I've just delivered to you evidence that we are violating the law. So that means going forward, if we continue to violate the law and you knew about it, that makes you an accessory to a federal crime. Gene, you have an oath of office that says that you will uphold the law. Diane, if you're an accessory to a federal crime, you're violating your oath of office. I have a copy of your insurance policy on your bond. And if you don't follow the law.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Wright, Ms. I've been, your time's up. Thank you. Stephanie Inselberg.
Sorry, was not planning on speaking today. All right, tell me when to start.
It'll start when you start.
All right, good morning. My name is Stephanie Inselberg. Item number VB2, which is Board of Elections. I'm a lifelong resident of Ben Salem. I'm speaking on behalf of the over 70 plus patriot groups from across Pennsylvania, state senators, including Representative Craig Stotts and Senate candidate Jared Coleman, and a long list of growing legislators that have all signed on to the election integrity declaration. What we are asking in a follow-up of everything that Christine has just told you is the firing of Tom Freitag, who was the director of the Board of Elections. We would like you to order a full forensic audit on the backup of all images of the USB drives in the county. And we would like one copy each go to our attorney general, our sheriff, and each precinct to get a copy of the USB drives for the particular precincts. We would like you to honor Christine Heitman's right to know request and give her the data she is asking for. We want you to return to paper ballots. It is clear that using electronic voting systems is too simply, is too complicated for us to be able to comply with the laws that surround it. So we want you to return to paper ballots for all upcoming elections. We want watermark and unique barcodes printed on our ballots, which other states are also starting to adopt. We want ballot counting to be livestreamed so that it ensures that everything goes smoothly. On the day of the county elections last year, I witnessed before 8:00 AM, one of the machines rebooting. And I was also made aware that other precincts, either there was no paper for a particular county or were somehow misplaced. This past election, I was also a poll greeter, as well as a poll watcher in Upper Two and Upper Five. The machines at the end of the night in Upper Five were unable to read the vote tallies because the paper jammed. I was then told it was going to go to Doylestown, I actually think it goes to Levittown first and to Doylestown, I don't know. I don't know if they were ever recorded correctly. I still have not received those numbers. The bottom line is, we do not trust the machines, the current process, and now we don't trust the people handling them. We want to go back to one day voting with proper issued state ID. If you need to show an ID to obtain a legal drink in PA, well, you dang well sure need a proper ID to exercise your right to vote. And if we have to file a right to know request to find out that they're about to destroy election results under federal law that have to be obtained for 22 months, you don't have to wonder why, we no longer have trust in our elected officials. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Dawn DiLuigi.
I really appreciate my time to see you today at this time, but I would like to move into public comment if possible.
I'm, I'm sorry, you, you. You want to mean the general public comment at the end? Okay, that's fine. You signed up for both.
I did, thank you.
All right. Chris Spear.
Hi, I'm speaking about the Upper Bucks Rail Trail, which it's a bit of a reach, but sort of referenced in the, uh, transportate, the Upper Bucks Transportation Plan. I'm here today to speak again about the Upper Bucks Rail Trail and the threat that a proposed quarry poses to it. Mostly I want to speak about the terminology we use to identify it. A park is defined as an area of natural, semi-natural, or planted space set aside for human enjoyment and recreation or for the protection of wildlife or natural habitats. From the visitbuxcounty.com website, under parks, it says, "The expansive countryside of Bucks County is home to many parks, trails, and nature centers, perfect for a day of biking, hiking, or running." Would you agree that our trail fits the definition, definition of parks? Other municipalities refer to their rail trails or refer to their trails as parks. Places with linear parks are Efforta Linear Park, Dean L. Snyder Linear Park in Lidditz, Rancoucas Creek Linear Park in Rancoucas, New Jersey. I'm not going to list the whole thing, but there's two real close ones here. Warwick Township Linear Park, right up the street in Warwick, and the Lower Salkin Rails to Trails Park, which is connected to and the continuation of the Upper Bucks Rail Trail as it enters Northampton County. Two of our county commissioners, Ms. Merseglia and Mr. Harvey, both attended the ribbon cutting for the mostly county funded park. Ms. Merseglia was quoted at that ribbon cut, at that ribbon cutting as saying, "The trail is something we need right now to connect us to nature, to connect us to our physical selves, and to connect us to other people we meet along the way." The current proposed quarry that would reside just west of the rail trail and extend to just 25 feet away from the boardwalk area would be subject to multiple daily closures of the rail trail when blasting would occur. During the township hearings about this proposed project, the lawyer for the quarry company has on multiple occasions objected to comments anytime a resident refers to the rail trail as a park, saying that is a trail, not a park. It is only because of our terminology that this happens. So again, I would ask, would you agree that our trails fit the definition of parks? Many people are not aware of what's coming to the Upper Bucks Rail Trail. And aside from the couple dozen residents attending the hearings, they will not know until the bulldozers roll in and the trail closed signs go up when blasting occurs. So please, I would ask you, consider our trails parks. So this would change this 25 foot setback to a much further distance that these quarries would have to be built next to our trails.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Okay. All right, those are the comments on the consent agenda, public, public comment period. Just to address some of the issues here. The ARPA funding, as you can see, number 18, a few people said they were speaking on. That actually is something that we're going to discuss when we get to it in terms of the, where the money is going to be allocated. All of that is public. We have to make public through the CARES Act, ARPA Act, where the money is funded and where it's going. So that's, that's already public information. And our COO will be addressing that when we get to that item. In terms of item number two, poll books, an e-poll book, we've talked about this before, this, when we did the original purchase order a few months ago. As people know now, when they go to vote, you walk into a polling place, if you're voting in person, you sign, there's a book, usually multiple books that have the list names of every single voter, address, signatures, et cetera, et cetera. You give your name, they look you up in the book, you sign your name, you know, and, and that's how they make sure you are who you are, match the signature, et cetera. The books are printed here by our staff, Board of Elections staff. It is somewhere in the area of 25,000 to 30,000 pages we have to print every election. We literally takes weeks just to print them. E-poll books are, and those poll books only deal with that specific precinct. So if you happen to go to a precinct that's not yours, you just moved into the area, not sure where you're supposed to vote, or polling places change, you're not sure where you're supposed to go, the people at that precinct literally can't tell you where your right precinct is because your name's not in that book. They'd love to help you. Usually what happens is they call here and they get somebody online to Board of Elections, they ask to give the person's name. Our staff has to look them up and then let them know, oh, they're supposed to go to this elementary school or this location, and they give an address and they send the voter on their way. E-poll books were piloted in multiple precincts over last year and in the spring as well, right? They were met by the poll workers themselves with rave reviews. They loved the idea of using them, essentially they are tablets. They are loaded with the same information the books have for every single voter in Bucks County. So you go in, you give your name, they input your name, there's a screen that has your signature on it so the poll worker can see it. They turn the screen around, you sign, so they can still match your signature. If you happen to go to that precinct, it's not the right precinct for you because every voter in Bucks County is listed, they can actually look it up right there and just tell you, oh, you're supposed to be voting here instead. And then they can send you on your way much more rapidly than having to call here. Remember, there are 304 precincts. So you can imagine 304 different precincts that's happening and the phones are ringing off the hook. E-poll books also, obviously, can just be reloaded and updated whenever needed. So we're not printing 27,000 pages twice a year. It also allows for more immediate upload of information so that we can make sure that we have the most up to date information in terms of changes of address, in terms of changes of registration, in terms of, bless you, in terms of, you know, who's filed for mail-in ballots, who submitted a mail-in ballot, absentee ballot, et cetera.
Can I just say on that too? I just want to reiterate that we have talked about this at public meetings several times, as well as at Board of Elections meetings, which are public. And as you said, I think it's important to remember that this was piloted. So, you know, this was tried and talked about.
Right. County has some grant money, which allows us to purchase these, you know, using a mixture of, of our funds and grant funds. Our hope is to use these in November, they come in, and we think it's going to be a tremendous improvement in terms of being able to look people up, getting people through the line more quickly, making sure we have the most accurate data, up to date. The specific item on this agenda is that these books come with cases to carry in stands. Our staff was. Our staff was able, the Board of Elections staff was able to kind of go back through the contract and find a way to sort of reduce the number of cases we have to buy while still accommodating the number of poll books we need, e-poll books we need, so it saves the taxpayers about $81,000 in this process, so we appreciate all the work that they did with that. Comment made about a job training vehicle, obviously unemployment is low right now, however, we have to plan for eventualities in the future, we can't wait until employment goes up and then say, gee, maybe now we should buy a training vehicle. Instead, we'd rather buy it now, we don't know when it's going to come in, it could be quite a while, so that we have the ability to go out. And we're also not going to write off those few, the people in our community who are unemployed and just say, well, there's not that many of you, so we're not going to try that hard to help you, which I think is, you know, kind of the, you know, the way some people might look at it. Issue of Aqua was raised in town hall meetings, Aqua, or the Bucks County Water and Sewer Authority are the ones who are considering the Aqua proposal. They've already had two town hall meetings, my understanding is they're probably going to have another one in September. Certainly, the commissioners are focused on that and trying to gather information, we have not been part of any negotiations, and so we're learning, we're trying to learn as much as we can as well. Questions raised about elections, wanting us to use paper ballots. Paper ballots are used, they have been used, they're the law in Pennsylvania since Act 77 was passed, the elections of 2020 were the first ballots, or elections that used paper ballots. They are on specialty paper and specialty ink, we cannot just find a, go to Staples and print off ballots, you know, machines will not take them if they're not specialty grade, which is one of the security measures. Questions about barcoding, the ballots are barcoded, and every ballot is checked against the register of voters, which is maintained by the state and the county. To infer that there have been some kind of mass, you know, fraud involving elections is, at this point, oh, never mind, there's been, you know, more evidence than will fit in this room by, including the former Republican Attorney General, Mr. Barr, who stated publicly multiple times that there was no widespread fraud of the elections that he has found at all. So, the reason that, you know, paper ballots are what we keep, and so if flash drives are changed so they can be used again in the next election, the paper ballots are still kept. So if there is a question about a specific election in a specific precinct, the paper ballots are kept, mail-in ballots, ballots on the polls, all are kept. So it doesn't really matter what the flash drives say, because you have paper ballots that you can go back to. If the machine jams, you have paper ballots that you can use, and that is what happens. There have been audits, there are regular audits. This is something else that is part of the misinformation about elections in this state. There are audits done regularly mandated by the state, and so that is something else that is done by our Board of Elections staff every year after every election, so. And in terms of looking at the trails, Mr. Spear, you know, we, it's, you may be happy to learn that we are considering, there's been some discussion here about taking the trails that we have here in the county and considering them parks. When the trail system was first started, you know, years and years and years ago, there was opposition to doing that, and so all the trails that had been built, had been built, dedicated and given to the local municipality for them to take care of. There has been some discussion about changing that, but we're trying to get a handle, that would obviously be something very big, that we want to make sure our Park and Rec Board is okay with, our Park and Rec staff is okay with, General Services is okay with, so it's, we want to make sure that we, we do that, but we understand the, the concern about the Upper Bucks Trail and wanting to keep it safe, so I appreciate you coming up for that. End of the comments or questions regarding anything that was mentioned during the public comment? Okay, thank you. All right, so we have minutes for the July 20th meeting. Are there any comments or questions regarding those minutes?
No.
Okay, so we'll, we'll take, we'll approve those with the rest of the consent agenda, which is items one through 16. Is there a motion to approve that consent agenda?
Who moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, move on to regular agenda. We're going to start with item number 17, a couple things from the Area Agency on Aging, and we have Kathy Bennett, I believe is here, Director of the AAA, as we call it. Going to explain to us our Senior Connect program.
Morning Commissioners, everyone. Thank you for this opportunity to just tell you a little bit more about the Senior Connect Program. We talked about this a little over a year ago, with initial funding through the CARES Funds, we were able to utilize the funding to try to increase the technology available to seniors in Bucks County in the hopes and the goal of trying to reduce isolation and loneliness on the part of seniors, especially during the pandemic. And so, since that time, we've developed three different things that we do through this. One is that we have utilized the funds to have a contract with Comcast through their special programs to get internet capability for seniors. The second is to buy tablets or laptops for individuals, plus all the bells and whistles that are needed for that, as well as training. So once you have the equipment, you need to know how to use it. And so we started this program through the Bristol Township Senior Center and the Ben Salem Senior Center, and through, since then, we've given out 30, have 30 subscriptions for Comcast Internet, and we've assisted 71 individuals with receiving some type of tablet, as well as getting the training that they need for that. So with the addition of ARPA funds that we received through the, through the Pennsylvania Department on Aging, which are allocated for aging services, these ARPA funds, we decided to extend the Senior Connect Program since it's been very popular and has been very helpful. And so through this program, we initially put it out to all the 13 senior centers to see if anyone else of the senior center, senior centers wanted to assist with this project. We had one additional one, Northampton, who agreed that they would like to take on this project. And so in trying to think a little bit outside the box, we then asked two nonprofits that we know have done work with seniors, as well as have, deal with low-income individuals. And so the Bucks County Opportunity Council, and we approached the YWCA to see if they would be willing to look at the possibility of how they could help us to get more seniors connected. Because of what they do, for example, at the Bucks County Opportunity Council, they have a special project that they do, which is their Community Supplemental Food Program, where they go into a number of the high-rises where seniors live through the Housing Authority, and so they're going to take on this project to combine that project along with then talking to those same seniors who we know are eligible for services, those same seniors to see if they would like to get connected to the, to get connected through our Senior Connect Program. And the YWCA has four community centers that they work with that also have seniors in those buildings and those centers, and so they're going to be working specifically with those centers. So we will be expanding our program to reach not only seniors that are in low-income housing, but also in various parts of the county. Initially, we were targeting the southern end of the county, but now through BCOC and the Y, we'll be able to extend that to other parts of the county, all the way up to Queker Town. So I just wanted to let you know that some of the outcomes that we've had from this is that of the seniors that have been utilizing the project, 85% of them have said that they will continue to utilize technology. What they're using it for mainly is for email, Facebook, surprising, connecting with family and friends, group meetings, educational programs, and virtual classes, which is one of the things we really were hoping that they would utilize it for, COVID information, and telehealth. So we're seeing that the expanse of how seniors are using this program has been really helpful. And so we continue this project, and our goal is that we will have about 180 additional seniors that will benefit from our funding of this project. Any questions?
Great, any questions from Ms. Bennett?
No, I'm good.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you very much for the update, we appreciate it, thank you.
Great, thanks for your support.
Okay, next, item 18, is the Commissioners approving the acceptance of the funds in American Rescue Plan Act of 2021, $61,017,041. Ms. McKevitt?
Thank you, Commissioner. Randy, if you could pull up the slide that shows the breakdown of the percentage, thank you. So on the screen, and I hope you can see it, there's a, what was it, I'm sorry, it's on, yeah. On the screen is a breakdown of the percentages for the American Rescue Act Fund. To keep in mind, this is half of the allocation, the total allocation is 120, a little over 100, $122 million, and our reporting is done annually, and our report will be up on the county's website by the end of the week. The breakdown, it is, first of all, let's, let me say, back up a second and thank the staff for all that they have done in regards to getting our programs established for the American Rescue Act Plan. It has been a work in progress, and it is a fluid document, because the budgets have changed frequently, some of our providers did not accept funds, other providers have come back and, and asked for modifications, so it is a fluid document and a fluid budget, so I just want to make sure that everyone knows that that's, that will continue to happen in the, in the future. So in terms of the breakdown, in public health, you'll see is 10% of the budget, and in that budget includes our county's vaccination program that will be wrapping up in September. And in addition to that, we have funds allocated to prevention and concure care settings, which is in our prison, and where we will be providing additional medical care in response to the COVID-19 pandemic. In addition to that, we have our, our co-responders program that we will be funding, and also physical plant changes, which is a capital project for the construction of a mental health and drug and alcohol crisis center. There will be braided funding for that project. Next is assistance to households, and this is in the form of job training and subsidized and funding for training efforts through our Workforce and Economic Development Program. We will be working with the Career Link in that effort. We will also be working with our, our court system in providing funding for a mental health court recovery house for women. We also will be allocating funds for housing projects, that includes affordable housing projects and folks suffering from homelessness. We will also be providing funds for the United, Bucks United Flood Assistance, Renovation, and Mold Remediation Program, and these is, this is all under the negative economic impacts category. We will be providing funding for the demolition of the old nursing home for future construction project, and also the Old Women's Center for the future construction of the Mental Health Forensic Center. In terms of assistance to businesses, we have provided business grants to small businesses throughout the county, and we partnered with our economic development agencies to provide that assistance. They vetted all of the, the programs and all of the applications for the business assistance grants. And now we move into assistance to nonprofits. We will be providing funding to our human services agencies throughout the county, to our senior centers, and to our emergency medical services. We will also be providing funding to Visit Bucks County, to, we also have a Fresh Farm Food Program that we are funding, and the Community College will be starting a program with our veteran community. We move into public health, negative economic impact, the public sector capacity, our largest public, our largest portion of funding, and that will go towards payroll and benefits for our public health and public safety and human services workers throughout the county. We will als, we also had an incentive for our vaccine program that we funded, and also we will be making some election, election program investments. And lastly, we will be replacing the court switches in the Justice Center, and that wraps up our public health negative impact, negative economic impact, public sector capacity. Premium pay will be provided to our human services partners, as well as our County Corrections Center. We have an infrastructure project in Morrisville Borough for the District Justice Center and Senior Center Building, they're connected. And then that takes us to our revenue replacement, and we are taking the one-time payment of $10 million for, for revenue replacement. And that wraps up how we are going to use the funds. The entire report will be on the website the end of this, this week.
Thank you, appreciate that. Any comments or questions from Ms. McKevitt?
We've been, I just, just to clarify, we have been approving at different meetings, different contracts in the spending of this money, and we will continue to do so.
Thank you, and echo Ms. McKevitt's comments, thanks, obviously, she, she read the report, and she probably put together the pie chart, but certainly, there's been a tremendous amount of staff involved at every department and agency in this county over the past couple years, and trying to determine what the best way was to serve the people of this county. And as Commissioner Merseglia said, you know, this is all, you know, approving this money is just approving the intake, we're not, you know, approving the expenditures at this point, any future expenditures of this money are all going to be approved at a public meeting as they always have been, so. All right, and item 19, United Way of Bucks County, this is approving a community development block grant funding program for the implementation of a car loan program, and I see Tim Philpott here is from the United Way, I think he's going to give us an update or an explanation of this program.
Good morning. Yes, the LIFT United Program, LIFT stands for Learning to Invest in Your Future and Thrive. It's a pilot program that combines financial literacy education and assistance obtaining a low-interest used car loan. Participants are low and moderate income working adults who have less than perfect credit, and who need a reliable vehicle to get back and forth to work. Their income will not exceed 75% of the area median income, and many will be from the ALIS population, those who are asset limited, income constrained, and employed, which means they're working, but they aren't earning enough to be able to purchase a reliable, reliable vehicle, but they're earning too much to qualify for most public benefits. So the goals of the program are that participants will learn how to better manage money and how to better understand credit. They will obtain a reliable vehicle so that they are able to get to and from work, so they can support themselves and their families. The loan is a low-interest loan guaranteed by United Way of Bucks County and provided by Penn Community Bank, and the lower interest rate means that they can save potentially thousands over the course of the loan in interest. And finally, by making regular payments, they will be able to improve their credit scores and credit worthiness. And this LIFT is a collaborative program, United Way is working with the Credit Counseling Center, Penn Community Bank, and if approved, with support from the county of Bucks.
Okay, great, thank you. Questions for Mr. Philpott? Okay, and how, how long do you think before you can get this, what's the plan for getting it up and running after we approve it?
Policies and procedures are written, it's just a matter then of informing other nonprofit agencies in the county about how to make referrals, so yeah, we're very close to being able to get, to get this open.
Okay, and hoping that also goes through the hub here in, in the county?
Absolutely.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Okay, you just asked one question, is new and used cars?
Tim?
Tim?
Oh, I'm sorry.
New and used cars?
No, these will be for used cars.
Used cars, okay.
With a life expectancy of at least five years.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Okay, great, thank you. All right, so we have on our regular agenda items 17, 18, and 19. Is there a motion to approve those three items?
Who moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right, moving on to ordinance, number 169, and I'm not sure who we go into on this one, Ms. McKevitt, or should we just go to Dr. Ganther, or what do you want to do?
To Dave Bascola, if we could.
Are you on there?
Good morning Commissioners, before you today is ordinance 169 for your consideration. It's for the approval of financing for the Bucks County Community College to borrow up to to an amount of $15 million for the project, which is the Welcome Center. Here today is President Ganther and CFO Frank Moore from the college, and Jamie Schlesinger from BFM, and George McNann at the bond council. Do any, answer any questions on the financing or for the project itself?
Okay. If Dr. Ganther would like to come up, just explain a little bit about what the project is, or Mr. Moore, whoever wants to, you know.
Good morning, Commissioners, and to everyone that's gathered here today. I'm very excited about the opportunity that we have to secure funding from the state of Pennsylvania, as well as through this effort in order for us to build out a welcome center for all those who are interested in pursuing something beyond post-secondary, something beyond a high school credential, as well as those who are seeking to come back and learn English or to secure GED. One of the items that I think is most important for people to understand about our Newtown campus is that there are actually seven front doors. And unfortunately, none of those front doors gets a person to where they need to be as it relates to understanding what we offer, how to register for classes, how to secure financial aid and scholarships, but more importantly, how to make sure that they are on the right path as they come to us. And so, our Welcome Center is going to be that hub. It is also going to be a space and a place for us to invite our local community in. As you all know, we host lots of efforts and initiatives. We support nonprofit organizations and entities that need space in order to host events and meetings, and we want to make sure that the Welcome Center is also a space and place for us to do that. And so we're very appreciative of the opportunity. We hope that today's vote will give us the confidence and the support that we need in order to make sure that we cover our financial responsibilities. Again, want to introduce our gentleman of the hour, Frank Moore, who is our Chief Financial Officer and the individual at our campus that is leading the way. May I just remind you that we've come before you on numerous occasions, and we are confident that we will continue to do the good work, not only through the programmatic offerings, but our structural capital projects as well. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Dr. Ganther?
Questions, yes.
No? Okay, you're good, thank you. And just for clarity's sake, you know, this is talking about, you know, bonds and loans and money from the state up to, not to exceed $15 million. This is not money coming from the county. It's not the county's not loaning money to the community college, correct?
No, the, the community college is borrowing the money. The county and its taxing authority is guaranteeing the bond issuance.
Right, okay, all right. Okay, thank you. So we, hopefully, you know, no defaults, right? Okay, all right, all right. Okay, any other comments or questions regarding ordinance 169? If not, is there a motion to approve?
Are moved?
Second.
Mr. Collins?
Okay, Commissioner Giderelmo?
Yes.
Commissioner Harvey?
Yes.
Commissioner Marsaglia?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right. Okay, moving on, personnel actions. The DA raised one issue.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. On the, what's it called, row list, it's item number 14. There's a mistake in the date. We have filed corrective paperwork. I would just ask that you correct this clerical issue and make that effective date August 15th as opposed to August 12th.
Okay, August 15th instead of August 12th?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Is there a motion to approve the personnel actions as amended?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, appreciate you bringing that to our attention, absolutely. Board appointments for Human Relations Council, we have a lot of reappointments. Ms. Joyce Hadley, Ms. Barbara Hoffman, Ms. Marjorie Leonard, Mr. Keith Pacheco, Mr. Robert Wilson, and those, excuse me, those are all terms, three reappointments, excuse me, Ms. Hoffman and Ms. Leonard are new appointments. All of those terms will end on 8/1/2025. For the Library Board, this is Ms. Kathleen Mulder-Pfeifer. She is finishing a term. Her term will actually end on November 1st of this year. And for the Redevelopment Authority, we had a member who stepped down, and so we have a new appointment to replace him, to finish his term. Mr. Brian Service, just a note that on the original printing, I think, the, his first name was spelled with a Y, it should be, I think, an I, or maybe it's supposed to be a Y, but it is an I, yeah. So, so either way, it's, you know, it's one of those. So yeah, it should be B-R-Y-A-N, so I think is what it's supposed to be. His term will end, again, filling in for a term, his term will end on July 17th, 2024. Is there a motion for those appointments?
Are moved?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Other civics, Big Brothers, Big Sisters, $12,000, and the Peace Center, $4,500. Is there a motion to authorize those contributions?
Are moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Chief Operating Officer, Ms. McKevitt?
Thank you, Commissioner. Three things. One, Household Hazardous Waste Collection is August 13th at the Lower Bucks area at the Ben Salem, Ben Salem High School on Humvee Road. And then also, Workforce and Economic Development is hosting another web talk. It's the Hospitality Industry Update and Outlook for the Future. The presenter is Ben Felicia. He's the Senior Director of Operations for the Pennsylvania Restaurant and Lodging Association. He will provide an update on hospitality industry across the region, as well as take a closer look at the state of the hospitality industry and where the industry was pre-pandemic and what has changed since then, and where, where they're heading now. And then also, I wanted to ask Dave Bascala to also talk about our AAA bond rating, if you could.
All right, thank you. With the, the borrowing that the college is going to do, and with the county guaranteeing the issuance, we had a ratings call last week and a report that was issued yesterday that reaffirmed the county's AAA rating stable for this issuance and all of the debt that the county has, carries. So that, that rating came from Moody's, that Moody's was the only rating agency that the college went to. We got reaffirmed AAA was stable earlier this year. It was just reaffirmed yesterday, and we still hold the, the AAA rating stable with S&amp;P as well.
Okay, and if I, just I cut to Dave before I told everybody what the date was for the, for the web talk. It is August 17th at 9 o'clock, and you need to register on the county's website for Workforce and Economic Development. So that concludes my report.
All right, thank you. Mr. Collins, listeners' report?
Thank you, Commissioner. First, the board had its standing executive session yesterday, which they conducted with staff and legal counsel to receive information and to discuss personnel matters, real estate matters, and the resolution of a couple of matters that were pending in litigation. Next, the board also met last Thursday in an executive session, again, with staff and legal counsel to discuss some personnel matters. And finally, Commissioner, I'll share or really amplify an update that some folks following the news may have seen this morning when they woke up. Act 77, which is the Pennsylvania election law that was passed with bipartisan support and signed by the governor, authorizing, among other things, no excuse mail-in voting. That law has come under a number of attacks and challenges over the years. There was a significant challenge that was brought over the course of the last year. The, the claim was that the Pennsylvania Constitution doesn't allow Act 77. It doesn't allow the legislature to provide greater access for people who want to cast their votes via absentee or mail-in ballot. The idea was that a section of the Pennsylvania Constitution that talks about residency requirements, how long you have to live in Pennsylvania, how long you have to live in, in your district, how old you have to be to vote, that somehow that provision of the Constitution disallowed the legislature from providing for this kind of access to the ballot. A Commonwealth Court Judge sided with that argument and temporarily sort of suspended or overturned Act 77, but almost immediately, the Pennsylvania Supreme Court stayed that so that business continued as usual throughout Pennsylvania until the Supreme Court could, could address this case on the merits, which they did late yesterday. The court took a very careful look at Article 7, Section 1 of the Constitution, and expressly found that it does not in any way prohibit the ability of the legislature to do as they did, to expand the access of absentee or mail-in boat ballots to others. And for that reason, Act 77 remains the law of the land, and elections will continue as expected throughout Pennsylvania. That concludes my report.
Okay, thank you. All right, move to our public comment period.
Ed Mackhouse again, Buckingham. Like to talk about the election right now. The Supreme Court State ordered Act 77. I don't think it's implemented properly. The mail-in ballot, the drop boxes, and the 2,000 mules video showed that there was 2,000 mules at the Keys States dropping multiple ballots in the drop boxes, which is illegal. And 1,000 of those mules were in, from the movie, was in Philadelphia, Montgomery County. So I, I don't know anything about any regulators in Bucks County found, but Montgomery County and Philadelphia, there were videos showing multiple drops, and the cell phone record showed mules going from 20 to 24 ballot boxes in a night, tracing them dropping multiple ballots in there. So none of these 1,000 mules have been indicted. There was also, in the Black Lives Matter riot, there was almost 800 rioters. Some of these have been identified as being operatives of January 6th and as mules. So there is evidence of criminality blaming Republicans for the January 6th on these hearings, and there is sufficient criminal matters that should be, District Attorney Shapiro should have investigated and prosecuted criminality, and it's significant enough, if you see the movie, to have affected the election and to account for why there's so many more Democratic mail-in drop ballots than Republican. Thank you very much. Consider this and try and keep Bucks County secure. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Good morning. I do want to state a little bit about elections also. When you say they're written ballots, yes, we write on them, and then they go through a computer system. This is not a Democrat or a Republican situation. We all know there was cheating. You can keep saying it's a conspiracy theory for as long as you want, but we all know. Delaware County, they have video of it. My girlfriend was in there with Greg Simpson, it's all. But that's not the point. We need to get rid of these machines. We have to, we could easily do this by having handwritten ballots. They go in a box. We can have more areas where they are so that they don't get congested, just like, I think it's France, they do it. I don't know why people, this doesn't mean anything to you, because all this money you're handing out and everything else, if we don't have fair elections, if the people do not have fair elections, we lose our republic, and we are losing our republic. We have lost the freedom of speech. It is gone. It may not be gone for you because of your agenda, but it is gone for those of us that have a different agenda or a different opinion. I mean, you can't put anything on social media without it being taken off, and I'm not talking about profanity, I'm not talking anything about that. Now, the money you're allied, allowing for this, allotting for this COVID vaccine, stop calling it a COVID vaccine. It's not a vaccine. It was approved for emergency, and it is an experimental treatment. Many people are dead. Check with the coroner of Bucks County how many people have died from blood clots and heart attacks. Young people don't drop dead on a soccer field at the way they're doing, or, or another field. So before you call us these conspiracies, the other thing is, the parking situation here, none of us get paid to come here. You get paid. I got a ticket for $50, I was familiar with that area. I don't know if you have parking garages you can tell us about, or if you could pick up the price of our tickets? Because we, you should want the American.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Kurcio.
Thank you.
Hi. I wasn't planning on speaking on this part, but I have a couple of issues that I'd still like to address. The two town halls that were offered for Aqua were offered very close to the actual day so that people couldn't change their schedules. There also, purgacy was offered in the morning. Many people work from nine to five, so I'm hopeful that they'll hear this and, you know, help, help the citizens out that are interested in coming to speak in a town hall. Also, I'm a dog with a bone with this $400,000 vehicle. I understand that. It seems that it's irresponsible to spend $400,000 on a vehicle without including staffing and everything else that's going along with that when we really don't have a need. And I, and I understand that you're trying to prepare ahead, but it just seems irresponsible when we do have a need. We have a need to fill the FOIA request. We have a need to fill the FOIA request. We have a staffing issue in the Office of Open Records that needs to be addressed. We have money flowing around, floating around, that can be used for that. I'd like to know if you are considering that. I'd like to know what's going on. Why is there a staffing issue when we have so much money floating around and available to us to satisfy a need? Need for, that, that's outstanding for citizens that are coming to you for transparency. I'd appreciate if you would consider that. And I'm going to stand here till my time runs out, because I'd like you to think about that. I'd also wish that a camera would be on you guys to, to watch your expressions as people talk about election integrity. Yes? Do you have the answer?
Mr. Art Larson?
Good day, Joel. What I want to talk about is the potential merger of Aqua with Bucks County Water Sewer Authority. They're saying there's 18,000 customers for $1.1 billion. You advertise that over 10 years, that comes out to $550 per month per customer ballpark. You look at the cost of money, 5% interest is $1.1 billion, another $250. So you're talking about, for a single merger of 18,000 customers, a cost of $800 a month when we're paying roughly about $50 a month an hour. Does not make economic sense, and to have Cordisco, who's the CEO of Bucks County Water Sewer Authority, present, you know, shows, tell us how great it is, where's the money going? That's a big issue. And I've seen it before. Look at Vivendi, when they tried to take over the Philadelphia water system, and look what happened. You had the Brothman boys and Charles Messner go to jail, and they lost a couple billion dollars. If we need to get a RICO investigation to make sure this is damn honest, we need to do it. Done.
Remember Bill Clinton and the definition of is, is? What's the definition of is? He wanted to change the definition of is, and you're sitting here telling me that you're going to change the definition of all. All from Merriam-Webster's dictionary is the whole amount, quantity, or extent of. All from Merriam-Webster's dictionary is the whole amount, quantity, or extent of. Every member component, or every member or individual component. So that does not mean some. The election records for a particular election include the individual ballots, the scanner device, the server, and the USB drives. If you're telling me the USB drives don't count in all, I really disagree with you because it says all records, all. There's records on the USB drives, and if you delete them, the federal law says the fine is $1,000. We have approximately 30,000 records times two USB drives. That's 60,000 records on the USB drives. That's $6 million. So I want to finish my thought. I'm prepared to either sue the three of you individually or go against your bonds. Don't be surprised by the dollar amount.
Sorry, I didn't actually know I signed up for both, but since I'm here. The one thing that I wanted to say to you, Robert, when you talked about the fact that we do use paper ballots, you know, there is some type of, you know, special stamp at the bottom, is that it doesn't matter if we have the piece of paper that goes in the machine, because then if it gets bounced back, it then goes to adjudication. So if I can quote Joe Biden, he said, and I quote, "It's not who casts the vote, it's who counts the votes that matter." So I just want to leave that with you. Anybody can adjudicate a ballot, and if you look at the nonsense that went on in Philadelphia at the convention center, they boarded up the windows, they wouldn't let certain people see it. We don't know what happened in the adjudication room. We don't know if there were two parties present. We don't know if somebody said that they were one party, but they were really the other. We don't know. We may never know. But again, you know, you know, I've been a lifelong resident of Bucks County. I'm not saying how old I am, but, you know, we have the best police force. We're on the list for one of the top places to live. We have the most diverse population here, and we would just hope that we continue to be the beacon of light for everybody in, you know, in the United States, for every county, to let Bucks County shine through and know that our elections are free and fair. Can we just continue that and work together? Both parties, it doesn't matter what party you are. This is our county here, and we should have fair and free elections. Thank you.
Dawn DiLuigi.
This is my first time speaking. My name is Dawn DiLuigi, I'm from Northampton Township. I ran for the State GOP Committee in 2022. I went to bed winning and I woke up losing. Hmm, that's odd. That's why I'm going to piggyback on Christine Heitman's statement about free and fair elections. I worked for the Council Rock School District for 42 years. I taught all kinds of things to my young people, and most of that had to do with learning to trust our leaders and to have a lot of transparency and to have your voice be heard. My voice is going to be heard somewhere, but I'm really, really worried as a taxpayer in this county, because my problem is that I really don't know where those video machines are for all of those mail-in ballot boxes. I'm really concerned about that. The only way we are going to win anything free and fairly is when we have transparency. And I don't believe there are videos at every ballot box mail-in, and I do know the Supreme Court ruling from yesterday. And yes, we are informed as an electorate. The elderly population, which I am a part of, I'm almost 70 years old, and I have basically given my entire life to this community, and I want to know if we are going to have a free and fair election and who is really in charge of these elections. Both parties. It's a nonpartisan issue. The second thing I want to talk about really angers me, it's the item number 18, and the amount of money that Bucks County spends is almost unbelievable to me. However, as a senior, as you know, we don't get a whole lot of tax breaks living here, and I really beg to differ with the Water and Sewer and the privatization of our public health.
Okay. Thank you.
That's all. And then next town hall.
All right, so just a couple of comments. Certainly, people that have concerns about Bucks County Water and Sewer and the potential deal with Aqua are free to communicate to Bucks County Water and Sewer. We encourage you to share your concerns with them. I do know that they think they just put up a website recently that has some information regarding the proposal, so certainly free to take a look at that. In terms of, you know, their issues, a lot of them we've already dealt with. In terms of the video from this, I'm afraid I'll ask, first off, there are cameras at every single drop box. And so I'll ask you, in terms of the file, the video files for the drop boxes, the records, you know, in terms of where does the video feed to and the records of those videos?
So under the Department of State guidance, we keep those records from the videos from our ballot boxes for 60 days. And we have ballot boxes that are here in the county buildings, and the ones then are at our libraries and the other locations. So those are being downloaded by our IT department. They are saved up to a cloud and then put on, it's saved at the cloud for 60 days, the ones that are at the libraries. The one, the ballot boxes that are here in this building are on our system called the Gentex system, and those are backed up, again, by the IT department here and retained here. In the 2020 election, we were using, because we only had the three locations, we were using, the sheriff was involved when he was keeping backup files, but now in our current system, we're using the IT department.
Thank you.
Workforce on Wheels. So the Career Link currently is housed in Bristol Township, it is moving to Ben Salem Township. And if you know anything about the county, it is, it takes quite a bit of time to get from Lower Bucks County to Upper Bucks County. There's a segment of the population that is underserved, that cannot make it or reach to Lower Bucks County. So instead of buying property in each sections of the county for Career Link to be, this workforce on wheels is going to supplement that effort. The staff will be Career Link, so it's not additional staff that will be using this vehicle. It will also go out to schools to try and outreach to students, to help them find career pathways. It will go to businesses. It will go to community events. It will try to help connect our population to jobs that they are not currently getting.
All right, thank you. Okay, go to Commissioner Comments. Commissioner Marceglio.
Just a couple of comments. I'm trying to figure the right words. I have to say that I live in a part of the county where there is an unemployment problem, so I'm glad that we are going to have that vehicle. And I think the transportation problem that Mr. Philpott talked about, people in parts of this county do not have cars, or they don't have cars that work well. So it's very helpful for them to be able to have transportation, and if they don't have transportation, they will have this Career Link as an option. I also am just a little, I guess, flabbergasted with the fact that we are sitting here and hearing lots of conspiracy theories, and it isn't healthy for people to listen to conspiracy theories. It confuses people. Vaccines don't kill people. Our election is safe. And I worry that people don't understand about... I worry if people don't even understand levels of government. There's 54 municipalities here. We are not a municipality. We don't give out parking tickets. And yes, we have two huge parking garages at either end of Broad Street. But you need to study government a little before you start coming out with all kinds of conspiracy theories, because it's very, very dangerous. Our free and fair elections are the cornerstone of our democracy, and we have taken this very seriously for many, many years. It is a nonpartisan thing. There has been no fraud found, period. Not anywhere in the United States. Thank you.
Mr. Geralmo.
Excuse me. Quiet down.
Thank you. I'm going to, my comments are going to be on something that happened last week, right here at our building, that I think was extremely important, and it affects many of the families here in Bucks County. We were fortunate enough, Bucks County, to be chosen to have, I think what they call a listening session with the Secretary of Drug and Alcohol Programs, Jennifer Smith. She came here to the administration building, and it was run by our Director of Drug and Alcohol here in Bucks County, Diane Rosetti. Rachel Neff, who's our Director of Human Services, was president. I know Matt Weintraub was there as well. Many elected officials from around Bucks County and staff here at our Department of Human Services and Drug and Alcohol Programs. And there was a lot of good feedback back and forth, and again, we know how serious this problem was. I got the opportunity to add a few things, and I talked a little bit about the importance of length and stay, especially with this heroin epidemic. I talked about getting people who are in good recovery to be able to work in these drug and alcohol treatment facilities. I think that is so important. Talked a little bit about confidentiality, which is so important, that people are going into treatment to make sure that their records stay safe and secure and are not out there somewhere in the public. But I really focused on the issue of parity, which a lot of people don't know a whole lot about, and it's an important issue, especially for people who have commercial insurance policies, and it's a federal law. And a federal law that was written up, and I was in Washington, where this was being passed a number of times, working on trying to improve the law and make sure it would work really well in Pennsylvania. It was, the sponsor of the bill in the House and the Senate was Patrick Kennedy in the House and his uncle, Senator Edward Kennedy, in the Senate. And they're the ones that put this bill together, and it basically said that drug and alcohol and mental health are both diseases and deserve to be treated like diseases, like all the other diseases, such as cancer, heart disease, and diabetes. And they put a bill together for the whole country and says that drug and alcohol addiction and mental health should be treated like the other diseases when it comes to commercial insurance. And I'm just guessing, but I think that was about 10 years ago. And here we are, 10 years later, and it's really not being enforced by the states. And again, enforcement in Pennsylvania should be up to the Department of Insurance. They have the responsibility to enforce parity here in Pennsylvania. And you don't hear a lot about it, because people don't realize or understand what benefits they've been paying for. And the way to enforce this, and I'm not saying it's not being enforced at all, the Department of Insurance has been trying recently. You need to audit these insurance companies to provide commercial insurance, that make sure that they're following the federal parity law. And another way to help do this is the insurance companies should be sending out information to their people who are paying for this insurance, letting them know what they are entitled to by their insurance. And there should be a phone number on the back of their insurance card where people can call and try to understand what they're entitled to when their loved one wants to go into a drug and alcohol treatment facility. That's what needs to happen here in Pennsylvania. Addiction and mental health are diseases, the same as every other diseases, and people looking for treatment should not be discriminated against. And again, it's up to the Department of Insurance here in Pennsylvania to enforce that, and I let the secretary know how important that was, and I think pretty much he agreed with me. I mean, it's obvious that it needs to be enforced. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for saying that. Very important. Just to kind of close out my comments, I thank the staff for everything they put together, all the work they put into it. You know, I was curious, we've been hearing a lot about transparency, and it's just, as Commissioner Marceglio had mentioned, it's a little bit, it's a little bit difficult to understand in terms of, you know, never before, until this board came in, were these meetings broadcast video, never, not once. Never before were Board of Elections meetings broadcast by video until this board took over. You know, so when talk about transparency, there's never been a more transparent, you know, county government. People know what a county commissioner is now, you know, a little bit more than they did, you know, before. I see Mr. Warren smirking a little bit. I didn't say everybody knew what a county commissioner does, Mr. Warren. I said more know now than they used to. This was a level of government that was invisible for most people. And so, you know, people who sat in these chairs, or chairs similar to this one, didn't always have the accountability hanging over their head, quite frankly. And that's not something that's coming just from me. In terms of things we've done today at this meeting, for housing assistance, $44 million has been spent by this county to help over 4,000 households stay in their homes and apartments over the past two years. Homelessness has increased in this county and as it has through the country, but there are 4,000 households who are still in their homes, still in their apartments, thanks to the work of the staff here in this county. 10,000 vaccines were issued this year by the county. We continue to offer clinics through the end of September for those who are interested. For our seniors, just today's meeting, we allocated $893,000 to help senior citizens in Bucks County. Board of Elections staff saved the county $81,000. Children, youth, and juvenile probation combined, $610,000 in today's agenda to help children in this county. Rebuilding a bridge in Bedminster for $1.5 million. There's $2 million for housing for those who are suffering illness or disability. We have the car loan program, $179,000 for that, and improving the safety of our park rangers, body cameras for them at $62,000. So it's quite a lot that gets done in these meetings, and so we appreciate all the work. And, you know, certainly, we talk about things on our agenda, and we've heard some applause at different times in today's meeting, and it's interesting, just after Christian D'Geralamo's comments with talking about the need for increased funding for mental health and for helping those who suffer from drug addiction, you know, no applause. And I think that says a lot about the problem in this country, the things we applaud for and don't applaud for. So I want to entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.